Good morning. The time is now 9:40 a.m. and a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education meeting of June 13, 2023 is called to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of agenda and order of priority. Are there any items that board members would like to add or delete from the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Snyder.
I move to add a resolution or to amend the agenda to add a resolution on permanent inclusion of the wheelchair category for MHSAA.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend the agenda. Do we have a second? We have a support from Ms. Tilly. Would you like to read it into the?
Take of time, I'll wait till later.
Very good. We have a motion to amend to add wheelchair category resolution on to the agenda. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none.
The second was from?
The second was from Ms. Tilly.
What, Ms. McMillan?
I beg your pardon. Mr. McMillan.
I misheard something too.
Thank you.
Very good. Any discussion?
Hearing none. I think for the sake of us saying a wheelchair amiss resolution and it's not clear and it's short, should we read it for the public?
If you'd like, that's fine.
Sure, I can do that. So this is a resolution on adding the wheelchair category for MHSAA as a permanent option to participate in sports. And it reads, whereas research demonstrates and supports the positive benefits of athletic inclusion and academic achievement for students with physical disabilities, whereas the MHSAA wheelchair category pilot program in track and field concluded on June 3 and was successful, whereas MHSAA is requesting letters of support for the permanent inclusion of the wheelchair category in athletics across the state. Therefore, be it resolved, the State Board of Education supports the permanent inclusion of the wheelchair category and seeks to serve this resolution as its letter of support.
We have a motion, we have a second. It's been read into the record. Any other discussion? Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote, please. Ms. Evans.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Both are carries.
Very good, thank you very much. Are there any other additions or deletions to be considered for the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I would like to move to amend the resolution, I'm sorry, the agenda to also add another resolution on financial literacy.
Very good. Would you look, so we have a motion from Ms. Snyder, support from Mr. McMillan. Would you like to read this one into the record?
I trust there will be robust discussion.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion, we have a second, no reading into the record. Any other discussion? Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote, this is the draft resolution on financial literacy.
Can you back up, sorry?
Yes, please.
Do you mind if I read it?
I asked if you would like to read it, yes.
Yeah, I'll read it. Whereas public education, students hold and benefit from a genuine need to be educated on personal finance in a robust way prior to making major financial decisions regarding higher education, employment, and household financial decisions. Whereas Public Act 105 of 2022 requires the Michigan Department of Education develop subject area content expectations that define what shall be taught and what shall not be taught, whereas the State Board of Education is required by law to approve the standards that serve as the foundation of subject area content expectations and that such content expectations require pupils to demonstrate critical thinking skills, whereas public comment received by the Michigan Department of Education describes the current personal finance content expectations to be woefully inadequate. Be it therefore resolved, the Michigan Department of Education should go back to the drawing board and with the input and collaboration of stakeholders, the public comment of educators, financial literacy tool providers, and current financial institution literacy providers, develop a truly robust set of subject area content expectations that guide local school districts in the purchase or development of curriculum that will ultimately deliver the intended result of financially literate high school graduates.
We have a motion, we have a second. The motion has been read into the record. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Evans, a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
No.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Please, Dr. Robinson.
I would like to amend the agenda to include a resolution on the freedom to read.
Okay, very good. We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second by Ms. Lipton. Any discussion? Dr. Robinson. Have a discussion?
Yep.
All right, very good. Any discussion from anyone else? Hearing none?
I would.
Please.
I just say that, I mean, I'm going to oppose this because it's clear it's an attack on parents who are concerned about age-appropriate books for their kids. And the desire by some on the left to over, to sexualize children. So this is, and it's actually false too, it has, you know, it's inadequate and untruthful, so I certainly am going to oppose it.
The motion to put a resolution on the agenda, we have a motion, we have a second, we've had some measure of discussion from Mr. McMillan. Any other discussion? Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Passed.
And Tilly?
No. I'm sorry, yes. Yes.
Motion passes. Cares.
Okay. So we now, board, have a, we have an agenda that has been amended with two resolutions. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Thank you very much, Dr. Pritchett, seconded by Dr. Pugh. Is there any discussion there on? Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Both are carries.
Thank you very much, board. At this time, Liz Evans, the State Board Executive, will introduce the members of the State Board of Education.
Good morning. You have just been listening to Dr. Michael Rice, Chairperson of the Board and State Superintendent. To his left around the table are Board President Dr. Pamela Pugh from Saginaw, Board Co-Vice President Ms. Ellen Cogan Lipton from Huntington Woods, NASB delegate Dr. Mitchell Robinson from Oconomist, Ms. Nikki Snyder from Dexter, and Ms. Nanette Hansen, the Michigan Teacher of the Year from Escanaba Area Public Schools. Seated behind them is Board Co-Vice President Ms. Tiffany Tilly from West Bloomfield. Back to the table, to my right are Tom McMill, Mr. Tom McMillan from Oakland Township, Board Treasurer Mr. Marshall Bullock from Detroit, and Board Secretary Dr. Judith Pritchett from Washington Township. Virtually, we have joining us today Ms. Stephanie O'Day, the Governor's K-12 Policy Advisor Ex officio.
Thank you very much, Ms. Evans. Public may register to provide comment during the public participation portion of the meeting at approximately 1:00 p.m. Those wishing to make public comment must register before 1:00 p.m. today. To provide public comment by telephone, please complete the registration form on the MDE webpage, www.michigan.gov/MDE. To provide public comment in person, please complete a green public comment form when you arrive here at the meeting location. These instructions are listed on the MDE webpage, again, at www.michigan.gov/MDE. Members of board, members of community, it is 9:49 and we are going to begin our committee of the whole meeting with a presentation on Macomb Intermediate School District's Grow Your Own program. During this presentation, we will hear from students and staff from Macomb ISD regarding the Summer Teacher Cadet Academy. This presentation will discuss the application process, coursework, the hands-on classroom experiences, the training available to support, to the support staff for the program. We welcome our presenters, students from the Summer Teacher Cadet Academy, present and up and at 'em early this morning in order to be in Lansing with us, McKenna William, Nicole Ayana, Madeline, Adam, and Shelby Ariel. Also at the table today, we have the Young at Heart Superintendent of Macomb ISD, Mr. Michael Devault, Dr. Alicia Fly, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Chief Academic Officer, Sarah Strobeck, Teacher Cadet Academic Academy Coordinator, Career Readiness and Counselor Consultant with Macomb ISD. And accompanying the presenters today are Dr. Greg Bartley, Professor at Oakland University in the College of Education, Annette Christensen, Professor, Professional Issues Organizer with the Michigan Education Association, and Kim Spriggs, Teacher Cadet Supervisor at Clintondale High School. This is an informational presentation, no board action is required, but some of the students may, board members, ask you questions as we get deeper into the presentation. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you.
I'll start. My name's Mike Devault, I'm County Superintendent and have a great appreciation for the State Board of Education and your role and your legacy. Want to thank the board and superintendent for inviting us here today. It's an honor to come and present programs and share what we've been doing in Macomb for multiple issues. We've been blessed by having Judy as our Chief Academic Officer, so some of the things that we talk about today, she's been inspirational with too, so we've had great leaders along with Alicia and others that are, have helped us. One thing in Macomb we try to do always is to think about scale and scope in terms, and giving kids and families opportunities. Any program we start with or have developed, it starts with those values. It's very important, whether it's the middle college with hundreds of kids, or the IB, or our Fine Arts High School, it's to given, to give kids and families opportunities to be successful. And I have been a strong advocate for summer school for decades. Judy knows that. I bugged them to have summer school programs for children and families forever. So when it, when it came, the two things together with the education shortage and also the summer school programs with pandemic and everything else, we said, hey, let's, let's, let's scale and mirror both together. We all, and you, jobs are important. Everybody can grow and gain from an experience. And this program, whether, has all kinds of unintended good consequences. One, it builds the profession, it uplifts the profession. Second, it gives kids an opportunity to experience a job and growth working with families. I think that whether our kids become teachers or not, they, they will grow and contribute both as family and as leaders and as parents. Once you experience the, working in a classroom with children, trying to learn and grow, you never forget it. It stays with you your entire life and we build, we build better citizens on this. So that's my cheerleader speech. I'm blessed, the idea, I will take credit for the idea. That's all, nothing more. And I'm surrounded and got a great support people that are, that think and implement these things. And I'm going to turn it over to Alicia, she's, has championed this and Sarah and the rest of staff, and just grateful that we got folks that are committed to this. And you have to be committed and sustained long-term. It's never a one-day deal. You need the entire community to support it. And we, we try to find ideas that are doable, scalable, and that, and that work from a countywide perspective. That's been our success model. Alicia, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Devault. Thank you, Dr. Rice, and members of the Board of Education. As Mr. Devault said, we absolutely appreciate the opportunity to share with you the work and showcase one of our partnerships in Macomb County. And we're sharing with you information regarding our Teacher Cadet Academy. And really, this presentation will be about student voice. And so we're so glad to have many of our cadets with us this morning as well, because we, we certainly feel, and I know you feel the same way, the best evidence of success of a program, and when you talk about the impact, is really hearing it from the participants to students' voice. And so this is our third year in the Teacher Cadet program in Macomb County. And we'll talk about our partnerships and some intricacies of the program, but as I said, we want you to hear from the students in terms of their experience. Sarah Strobeck will begin with the presentation. Sarah's our Career Readiness Counselor at Macomb Intermediate School District, works closely with these students in our local districts and the supervisors of this program. And so she coordinates this Teacher Cadet program. And so Sarah, why don't we begin with the presentation? And throughout the presentation, we'll have students rotating in so they can speak to you specifically about their experience.
Good morning, everyone. Superintendent Rice, I'm member of the Board of Education. As Dr. Fly mentioned, I am the School Counselor and Career Readiness Consultant for Macomb County. And so I'm excited to talk about this program and to be able to champion its success and elevate the work that these students have done in our county. First, I want to explain the structure of how this Teacher Cadet Academy works in Macomb County. It's different than other models across the state. This is a non-CTE program. Students, whilst backup districts are invited from across the county to be a part of the Teacher Cadet Academy that is facilitated by the MISD, but it's homegrown in those local districts. So every district has the opportunity to join the academy and say that they want to be a part of this journey. And they determine how many high school students they will employ during the summer and allow them to be placed into summer school classrooms within their communities as instructional assistants. Once that is determined, I create an application system for the students across Macomb County to apply. As Doctor, as Mike Devault mentioned, we want the students not only to learn what it takes to become a teacher, but we want to raise them as professionals as well. So the students are required to fill out a centralized application system that takes place across the springtime. The local districts then review those applications and they determine their, out of their student body applicants, how many students they're going to place within their districts. We also have students that are a part of our Early College of Macomb program. We have over 650 students that are required to do an internship and job shadow every single year. And so if we've any vacant positions throughout the county, we will use our Early College of Macomb students and place them into those districts. And they work as employees and they also gain their required internship experience as a part of their MAMCA certification. So locally, the rest of the districts have to employ a Teacher Cadet Supervisor. So I'm honored to acknowledge Kim Spriggs and Dana Taylor from Frazier. Each one of our districts has a teacher who supervises our cadets and meets with them weekly to make sure that those students are being supported in the classroom and also spend time with them weekly to, to go over observations, the good, the bad, the ugly, all sorts of victories, et cetera, of being a teacher. Tonight, I will be back at the MISD with these students to do the pre-summer workshop. We all meet together as a whole county group. I had over 180 applicants this year across Macomb County. So tonight will be a room full of energy and full of high school students who are going to be trained and amped up to get ready to work in their community classrooms this summer. So tonight, we'll be back at the ranch, as I say, working on workshopping, going over best practices, roles, expectations. The supervisors will be on site to support the students. And we also have our distinguished partners, Dr. Greg Bartley from Oakland University and Annette Christensen from the MEA, who will also spend time with our students tonight talking about the process to become a cadet, I'm sorry, to become a teacher, the different certification options available in the state of Michigan, and also some great scenarios and best practice activities for them so that they're ready.
And when we talk about the structure of the program, it was mentioned a little earlier. In Macomb County, we help coordinate, again, it's always in partnership with our local districts, summer programs for, for students. And we have thousands of students who are enrolled, but as an ISD, we provide all of the training, we provide the materials, and the camps are held, or the summer programs are held within districts and the local districts employ the teachers. But it's a, the, the local districts appreciate the consistency with the training model, the structure, the materials. And that is one unique aspect, we feel, of Macomb County. So when we talked about opportunities for students to work, that's where the students are working. They are working and learning about the craft of teaching as part of our summer programs that run the whole spectrum with our students who are entering kindergarten all the way through high schoolers. And if most of our, many of our districts are engaged in this work, if they aren't, we have students who can assist from other districts to have the opportunity to, to work as well. And so we, enough of us, I think it's time to introduce one of our first students, Ms. McKenna, who's going to tell you a little bit about her journey as a Teacher Cadet.
Good morning, everyone. My name is McKenna. I graduated from Lakeview High School in St. Clair Shores last year, actually, 2022. And I am currently entering my sophomore year at Wayne State to become a teacher. And my teacher journey really started when I was six years old, when I started karate. When I was eight, I was asked to join a leadership team, which is the team that teaches everyone from ages five all the way to, there's not even an age limit there. We have 54, we have some people that are 60, so I've really been teaching people of all ages since I've been eight. And that's just really helped me realize that I want to become a teacher, especially to those that are in elementary school. And my high school actually has a CTE program for Teacher Cadets, so I was part of that for two years. And part of that class is going to classrooms in our district. And I was placed in a kindergarten classroom for two years. And that helped me realize that I want to do elementary, but not kindergarten. I love kids, but I can't be part of that main part. I love the kids though. And then I did the summer program for the two years. And I was going to do it this year, but I am doing a program at Wayne State this year that is bringing in juniors and seniors in high school that want to become a teacher, and I am helping lead that this year, or else I would be back at the summer school. And yeah, just been teaching pretty much since I've been eight to all ages. So looking forward to being part of the actual education community.
Great, McKenna.
Thank you, McKenna. And again, we, Sarah's mentioned our partnerships. Do you want to advance the slide? Again, this doesn't happen in isolation, it is in partnership with our local districts as well as the Michigan Education Association, their aspiring educator programs. They, again, are a part of the training and information for the aspiring teachers. And we have several universities that also are a part of the training and talking about the credentials and necessary steps to become a teacher. And Oakland University and Wayne State have been great partners in this work. And in terms of, and we spoke a little bit about the, the summer, the opportunities to assist in the classrooms. These are one of the things, as, as Mr. Devault mentioned, and when we were initially talking about this idea, you know, he was like, we got to pay the students, we need to have a meaningful experience for the students. And so the students are paid for the positions. And again, they're assigned to classrooms throughout the county, many of them within their local districts. But if their local district doesn't have a Teacher Cadet program, they would be assisting in other districts, or working in other districts, I shouldn't say that. And they work side by side. They've become critical, important parts of the summer function programs throughout Macomb County. We get feedback so consistently from our local districts. Districts are saying now, three years in, we couldn't do this without the Teacher Cadets. And so we know that they're valued and we wanted that to be reflected and that it was a paid summer experience for the students as, as well. And now we'll turn to Adam, who will share his journey as a cadet.
Good morning. My name's Adam Skeneck. I just graduated over the weekend from Frazier. And I'm going to Wayne State in the fall. Thank you. I'm going to Wayne State in the fall for education. Just like McKenna said, I've wanted to be a teacher ever since I was in kindergarten. I loved my kindergarten teacher, she was my favorite. I still talk to her today. I still get tips from her, I love her. But she's really helped me and really pushed me to be a teacher. And all my teachers throughout elementary school have really done that. Those beginning years have really taught me how to be a teacher and made me really want to be in the school, as much as I didn't want to be in elementary school. I want to be in, when I'm older, so I'm really excited about that. And then in high school, we had the Future Teacher Class, which is a CTE class. And I did that for two years, where we did the field placements in the Frazier District, where we could go around and meet with the kids and work with the classes throughout the entire year and see how their day goes and their structure and things like that. And then when this position was offered, I took it right away. I knew this is something I'd want to do. And I fell in love with it the first summer I did it. I've done it for the past two years. And I'm excited to do it for the third this year. And it's just really helped me and really made me want to be a teacher, and I'm just, I'm excited for the future.
Do you want to speak to some of the ways that they're in action throughout their experience?
Absolutely. So as Dr. Fly mentioned, when I do site visits, so I will circulate the county all summer and provide support to the supervisors who provide support to our students. And every time I walk in, whoever greets me in the school offices will say, you're the lady behind these wonderful students. And they will say, we couldn't do it without, we couldn't do it without them. And so if you look at the slide right now in front of you, you'll see, this is a great summary of all the different things our cadets are empowered to do. They're either on recess with the students, as you know, a tired teacher appreciates those extra set of feet out there. We have students that participate, the cadets participate in field trips, different types of enrichment activities. In the middle, our cadets are asked to plan and execute a lesson on their own. The cooperating teachers support them in this process. So this is one of our cadets out of Romeo Community Schools, who's showing off her lesson plan on numbers. And she was sharing it with me that she had her five-year-old cousin practice it the night before so that she knew it would go smoothly in the classroom. So all of our cadets get that experience. And then on the right, you'll see some of our Clintondale cadets, who are actually working with the STEM kits that are provided by the MISD for the STEM program. And so big smile on that big student's face there because he's helping those young people put that and assemble that together. So they're all completely kids at heart. But this is just a good snapshot of the different types of ways that our cadets can assist our summer school programs in the county. So I think the best, most enriching part of this program is that the cadets are required every single week, at the end of their week, to meet in a cohort model. And they are sitting around and they're talking with their supervisor about a variety of topics. We provide them the core teaching practices as provided by the MDE. And the supervisors will meet with those students and emphasize a different core teaching practice for the week. They ask them to write down their observations, talk about classroom management techniques, how did this work, why didn't this work, and help them navigate some of those difficult moments with their students who they care so much for. And they have a really, they provide a lot of support for them. So we provide that support for our cadets as they navigate throughout the highs and lows of being a teacher. So these are two great pictures of, this is Lake Shore Schools, this is their cohort weekly meeting. And then on the right, you'll see a sampling of our cadets from Romeo during their weekly meeting as well.
Okay. Madeline.
All right. It's my pleasure to introduce you, Madeline, from Anchor Bay Schools.
Good morning, everyone. I am Madeline Monroe. I am an upcoming senior for Anchor Bay School District. I am also an Early College of Macomb student. I joined last year with my best friend because I had just quit my previous job because I didn't enjoy it. And I was like, gives me something to do during the summer. I thought I was going to be like really scared at first because sometimes kids are really hard to control. I was hoping for kindergarten. Thankfully, I got first grade. They were my favorite ever. All the kids were so cute. They, they always called me their role model and they just loved talking to me and giving me so many fun stories. At the end of the year, and when summer school was ending, I was super upset, but what, they needed, put a big smile on my face is all the kids ran up to me, they gave me a big hug, and they're like, are you going to be our real teacher? Are you going to be my teacher? And I was like, oh, I'm so upset about this. But thankfully, once summer school was over, I was offered a job to work at a daycare with pre-K students, and that's what I'm doing now and have been for nine months. I am coming back to summer school, so I'm going to be working two jobs over the summer. But I am always proud to say that I'm continuing my education and career just because of this opportunity. I had never thought about it before. And yeah.
Thank you. That's all I'm saying.
So at the end of the summer, we bring all the cadets back. And you'll see, this is a photo from our end-of-the-year celebration last August. We bring the cadets back and we invite their family, their friends, and a lot of the leadership from the local districts also attend. And we honor our cadets by giving them an opportunity to report out about their experience. We give them a, a great certificate of completion. We give them letters of recommendation. Again, this is an employment opportunity to build our students' resumes as well. And we provide them a time to celebrate the work that they did. And the great part is that our cadets are across the county doing the same work, but they never get to see each other and interact once the summer starts. So when we bring them back together, our cadets from all across the county get to interact again and talk about their celebration. Last year, we used a micro grant from the Grow Your Own Explorer Fund to purchase a book for all of our cadets called Atomic Habits. book for all of our cadets called Atomic Habits. So I thank you for that fund that helped us give our students a great book of inspiration as we concluded the summer celebration for them. So at this time, we'll have, will you guys allow three more students to rotate in? We'll have our students from Clintendale rotated. Next up, you can leave the bag there. And we'll start with Ayana's journey. And then we'll have William share his journey as well as Nicole. Ready?
Okay. Good morning. My name is Ayana Mackey. Last summer is when I started teacher cadet. And I genuinely was pretty nervous because I'm kind of quiet and kids can be a lot. So I was like, I don't know if I'm going to be able to control them and form relationships and know how to like, you know, control the classroom. But I ended up bonding with the kids. It was genuinely like my favorite part of the summer, even though waking up at seven a.m. wasn't always ideal. Going in there in the breakfast room with them, talking to them, it really made my day and it made it worth it. And in the fall, I'm going to Eastern Michigan to major in elementary education. And I'm really excited. And this experience really did push me to just go for it and stop, you know, feeding into all of the negativity about education. I was like, you know what? If I love it, I'm going to do it. Thank you, that's it.
William?
Honestly, going, well, first, I'm William Hollins. I'm an incoming senior at Glendale High School. And honestly, before starting the program, teaching wasn't one of those like career choices I was looking into because like Ayana said, there's a lot of negative like feedback in terms of teaching. And honestly, that wasn't one of the career paths I was looking for. But then during the spring, I was presented with the option and like, a lot of my teachers kept pushing me to really sign up and complete the program. So I signed up and going into the program, I definitely enjoyed working with the kids. Although like everyone else has said, they can't be a lot. And it's a lot dealing with like the different personalities and the different attitudes. It was definitely an experience and it opened my eyes to a different career path that is like a really positive, that can have a really positive impact, especially being able to be like that role model for the children.
Thank you. Nicole?
My name is Nicole. I'm an incoming senior. And I participate in the early college program. I, starting off with the teacher cadet program, I really just did it because it was like, gave me something to do for the summer. It was something I could do with my friends and I would make money from it. Like being in the classroom, like with my teachers, over the last two years, I've learned a lot from, not even like, just like the teacher in my classroom, but from Miss Briggs. And watching her like, do, oh my gosh, I can't remember the word. Like teaching techniques. I got to actually be in situations where I could do those myself. And I am, I have like a long way to go, like as in like getting to the person where I want to be. But like doing this program has really helped me come like a long way in getting there.
Thank you. And so as we move towards wrapping up our presentation, the next slide, you can see how the program has grown over the years in all areas, from our districts, local district involvement to the number of applicants. And we really do feel that it will continue to grow. And when we talk about the impact of the program, we do a post survey at the end of the experience. And you can see a high percentage, seventy-nine percent of the participants indicate that they yes or maybe would be interested in pursuing education. And so when you talk about impact, we really do feel like it's making an impact and the kinds of things we want to hear and see as we grow our profession. And some of the students, and I, we may not have heard it in the specific examples with time limits, but as some of the students transition to their college experience, because of the experience they've had in the teacher cadet program, they earn, they already get credits when they enter at the university level. And so it continues to be a cost-saving for the families. When you think about especially students who go from an early college perspective. So that's another added value.
That's a big bonus. You get the experience, you get paid, you think about becoming a teacher, and you get credit going into college. I mean, that's how much the universities have evaluated the program.
And as we, and taking us home, we have our last student voice that's with us today. And Shelby Ariel will talk about her experience in the program.
Good morning. My name is Shelby Ariel. I am a teacher cadet alumni. I am also an early College of Macomb alumni. Right now, I attend the University of Michigan in the School of Education as an elementary major. And I am now currently working for the MISD as a paraprofessional in an autistically impaired educational center. So my story is very much different from everybody else because I went into college as a music major. That survey you probably seen, I probably hit no. I didn't want to go to education. I went into college as a music major. I thought that was my passion. I was in the Detroit Youth Choir, every vocal lesson, all of that. But this program completely changed my life and what I want to do. I could talk so much about the program from the supervisor. My supervisor, she wrote my letter of recommendation to get me into the School of Education. So I still have a connection with her for which I'm very grateful for. My coworkers, I still talk to them, the kids, oh my gosh. Y'all are probably going to get on me because I taught going into first grade and everybody's like, oh my God, going into first grade. But I adored them. I adored them. They loved me, I loved them. From the first day, some of the students, they couldn't really read, they couldn't read sight words. But for me, like being able to be hands-on with the students and know that I have the power to change that, in which I did, it just made it like, I'm a very emotional person. So it made me like, like wow, I can, I can really do this. Like that's how I feel when I think about education. Like I want to go into elementary education because of the fact that I know that I have the power to change lives. So if I could do it, why would I not do it? So yeah, I'm very grateful for the program. Like it made me change my major within the first, my first semester. Very grateful that I changed it early on. And I'm also grateful for the early college because it's also letting me graduate a year early. So yeah, I'm very grateful for the whole MISD as a whole. Without them, I don't know where I would be, probably in college suffering as a music major.
Don't say that to me.
We'll get to board member comments in a minute.
And so, Dr. Rice, as we conclude here, we're looking forward to actually expanding the program. We appreciate the continued investments that you're making as a board of education, as we look to grow educators. We are, we recently received one of the Grow Your Own Grants. And so we will have the opportunity, you'll notice that flyer in your folder, where we will have the opportunity to, and it's focused on our early college students because they have sixty-two credits and they can earn their teaching certificate within two years. And so again, it's another unique opportunity through Macomb County, but it's because of the investment that you continue to make as boards of education and in partnership with our legislation. And that partnership will be with Oakland University. So we're excited about what's to come for there as we continue to provide opportunities for access and remove as many barriers as possible so that we can have as many more amazing students like you've seen today go into the field of education because we absolutely need them and our students absolutely need them as well. So thank you. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Fly. Thank you, students. Superintendent DeValt, Ms. Snyder.
I'd love to just praise the students first. And just because from a personal standpoint, I started my career in high school too through CTE. I got my certified nursing assistant certification. And that started a long career that, you know, what I would say to you is don't stop, right? So you know, you're going to find yourself in a position where you might do something beyond that, right? I became an internationally certified lactation consultant, working with moms and babies. And it all started in high school, right? In senior year, when I did something, a program like this. So really cool that you're doing this. Stick to it, follow through and just keep climbing and keep moving forward is really what I would say. Keep growing into who you are becoming. Just one quick question about the program. So where you're at now, I see is eleven districts, one hundred and ninety-two applicants. Does that mean there's actually one hundred and ninety-two teacher cadets?
Right now, they're, that's who applied, but the districts are making the determination as to how many they, because they have to fund the salary or the wages for those cadets. So they're going through those right now. So we find there's probably about a ten percent drop off. Students get other summer jobs, they make sport teams, et cetera, so.
Okay. And what is the total budget for that program right now? Eleven districts is within Macomb ISD, correct?
We didn't start with a budget. We said, look, you know, there were funds that have, that each district was get. And when I met with the superintendent, I said, this is important. And they all committed to do it. Almost all did. So I mean, you have to start with that in terms of discussions with the local districts. And as she talked about, now we've got some grant funds that are going to accelerate it and help it. But essentially, this was from district operations. I mean, we funded all the training and as we do with all the science kids and paid for a lot of other things, ISD. I can't tell you how much we've invested, but every dime, I think, is a good investment.
Understood.
Any other questions? Very good. Thank you. Mr. Bullock, Ms. Lipton.
I just want to commend you all for just taking the leap, the step forward into, to the teaching, education profession. I want to know, especially from a couple who said they had no interest in teaching or education, along with the negative myths or the, because you guys are becoming mythbusters to be able to advocate for the education field. Do you have any takeaway, like appreciation for the teaching, education profession that you didn't have? You've learned as you've gone through some of this process or this program. Because like my daughter was at Central, she's on a pause, but she wants to be a special education teacher. She has no patience with me at all. That's what she, like, that's her gift, is patience with the kids when she's doing her thing, but not at home with me. I want her to use those skills.
Yeah, so honestly, coming into the program, it definitely gave me like more of a respect for teachers, especially because like as a kid, when the teachers kind of set that, like that structure, like that discipline, you kind of see it as like mean, they're just, they don't have your best interests at heart. So to be kind of on that side and really setting that standard and that structure, even though it's just summer school, but still having to set that standard and that structure, it really helped me get a better understanding and see it from the teacher's point of view. And it definitely gave me like a deeper level of respect for all my past teachers and like really allowed me to get that appreciation.
So for me, like my mentality is that as a, well, I want to be an elementary teacher. So when I think of elementary, kids spend a lot of time in the classroom, when you really think about it, versus the way that they do at home. And I feel like what you do in the classroom matters, no matter if it's just educational, socially, like you have the, teachers have the power to make a person. They really do. And I feel like that that's where my appreciation came from, just watching that and seeing how like, especially working with special ed, teaching them how to be, I work with post secondary, so they're like twenty-six years old. So they're about to graduate. So they need to be independent and they need to be able to do what they need to do because they're not going to be here forever. So me being in the classroom and being able to tell them, okay, you need to do this by yourself. I'm sorry, but you have to do this by yourself. You're going to have to learn. That's my appreciation for the teachers. They put a lot into people, a lot. They pour a lot.
Well, thank you. I just continue success, continue working. And it's okay to not know what you want to do, as long as you know what you don't want to do.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Ms. Lipton?
Thank you so much to all of you and for the presentation. I have a couple of questions just about sort of like logistics and infrastructure. So it sounds to me like this was a natural extension of your early middle college program that the district already had. Can you envision doing a cadet academy like this without the early middle college?
Actually, this program wasn't, it didn't grow.
They weren't connected.
Yeah. It didn't start in connection with the early college program intentionally. Actually, it started with the idea of how can we get young people, how interested and invested and to give them opportunities to learn about education. And that was open to all students in Macomb County. So conceptually, it began with a conversation with our local districts. And so the local districts bought in conceptually. And we have a model at the MISD where often, when we're initiating new programs, as an ISD, we'll provide the training. Often, we'll provide the training, the structure, the materials. And our, the feedback we get from our local districts is that they really appreciate that. And because our locals bought in conceptually, they were, you know, definitely willing to provide the pay, the wage for the students in the program. But it wasn't connected intentionally with early college. But as we know that the need to grow educators is, continues to be a challenge, and we were seeing the success of this program with individuals like these young people, we thought, wow, if we could tap into, and we had a number of early college students who were teacher cadets. And we said, that could be a unique lane to intentionally connect our early college students. And quite frankly, inspired us to apply for the Grow Your Own Grant because we knew we had students, you know, brilliant students sitting with sixty-two credits, interested in being teachers, who could be in the field within two years, doing what they want to do. So it came as an outgrowth of a successful teacher academy that was in place. This is year three of it. But it was an opportunity for all students throughout the county.
Okay. So you do envision being able to, or a potential district or ISD could in fact do something like this without having the.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
This is doable. It's doable in a lot of places. Just takes will. I mean, I'm sitting in a restaurant on fifty-nine, watching three girls service pancakes and breakfast. And I'm thinking, they could take that skill, that personality and work in a classroom. I mean, I believe in work and, I mean, I don't care, any kind of work is good work. But it's maybe more meaningful for our state and if you give kids an opportunity to work in a classroom, elementary, high school, special ed, doesn't matter. It's all payoff for us and for them.
So that leads into my next question. So the cadets, okay, so it sounds to me like, well, I guess my question is, how did you market it to the students? In other words, was it the teachers recommending students? Is it more from the teachers? And then also, how did you convince the parents? In other words, how are the kids selected for summer school? There's such a sort of a sentiment in the state that, you know, summer is for summer camps and what have you. So how did you market it to the families that this is an important component of their youngster's education for them to attend this summer school?
So I'll take part of the question and Sarah can speak to how she markets it. But in Macomb, we've had a long tradition regarding summer programs throughout the county. And again, it goes back to that structure, whereas in ISD, we provide the training and materials. And our local districts, you know, compensate the teachers. So the, you know, the, we probably had two hundred teachers just for one of our camps, you know, just recently. So the teachers come in, they get the training. Each local district doesn't have the burden of that training. And we consistently have a format that we're using throughout our county. And it varies within the local districts if they run camps for four weeks, you know, to eight, it's a range from four to eight weeks in terms of the camp. So you may have a family that say, I only want my child in a camp experience for four weeks. We're not going to do it for the whole summer. But we have some families that say, I want my child to be in camp for most of the summer. So they would have the eight-week experience. And so we, and we offer a variety. So you know, it's reading, math, it's STEM, it's enrichment, it's a variety of opportunities throughout the county that families can participate in. So that continues to grow. And again, families opt in in terms of what seems appropriate for their child and their family. And once that, that was in place, and that's been in place for years. And then when it came to marketing.
Let me give one story. We run a computer camp. I had a parent come in at Christmas, say, hey, Mike, I want to buy a membership for my grandkids for the summer school and give them to us as a Christmas gift. True story. They wanted to get the kid in the program, the elementary or seventh or eighth grade kids to come in and do the program, computer camp. I don't know how she found out about it, but she did.
So Ms. Lipton, in terms of recruiting.
So I'm the counselor consultant for the county. So I'm directly connected with all the school counselors in our twenty-one districts. And so what's important to note is this is not a CTE opportunity. We do have a variety, we have students filtering in from CTE, early college, or students that might have a traditional school schedule without a CTE. This gives them an opportunity in the summer to do it. So what we do is I have a marketing campaign. Once I've identified, or the districts have identified themselves as a site for the summer, then I work with that local school district with a promotional campaign to advertise this to their student body. And then we open up a centralized application system. And by being the third year, as you see how our numbers just skyrocketed. And by being the third year, as you see how our numbers just skyrocketed. It's because of the students' experiences sharing with their classmates. I have several students who are in their second year of college email me already and said, do you have a spot open? I'm coming home from Saginaw Valley. I'd love to work again. So that first year, it was a heavy lift for me. It was a heavy lift of explaining the dynamics and making sure that everybody understood the expectations. But now there is no lift. The lift is these students and their testimonies and promoting it.
So the families, so that's right on the older student, the cadet. But it sounds to me like from the standpoint of the younger children that are in the classroom, there was a history in the ISD of providing enrichment, summer.
Yeah.
Program. So there's not a stigma of the kids going to summer school.
Correct. That was not a new element.
Ellen, I will tell you this, it's not, it's a struggle to get everybody in. I mean, there are more kids that need help in the summer than actually show up. I'm not saying that we service it all, but you have to keep trying. And on our superintendent's monthly, we meet a couple of times a month, on the agenda starting in February, maybe December, is what are we doing for summer school? It's always a topic, right? Are there summer school plans? She talks about it with the curriculum people. What are we doing in the county? What worked last year, what'll work this year? You just have to keep emphasizing as an opportunity. But I will tell you, we need the participation for kids that are behind, and Mike knows this, in math and reading. We need more kids in the program than actually parents send the kids. That's a fact of life. But you got to keep having opportunities there, make it available, make it comfortable, have it fit the parent's schedule, and then have good folks like this work in the class. And that's a positive experience. So that kid goes home and tells the neighborhood kid, hey, this worked out good for me. That mom tells the other mom, this is working good for my kid.
Do the parents, do the parents pay for the program?
For summer school?
Summer school.
In most instances, not. Yeah, and most, and again, that would be determined at the local district level, but most of the.
The ones we run, they all charge.
Yeah, most of the summer opportunities are free opportunity for families.
And then my last question is, did you have any challenges in terms of transportation? Not from the kids' end, but from your cadets' end, getting them to the sites? Because they're driving age, but I'm just curious to know, what, were there challenges in getting the cadets to the various sites they needed to be at?
Does anyone like to speak to that? Well, I'll say, what is great is that these students are working in their hometowns. So they're working for their home community.
Okay.
A lot of them have said that students have seen them in the grocery store. Hi, Mrs. Smith, you know, they get so excited to see that. But when I have those vacancies, I expand it to our early college students who have to be mobile because they leave high school half a day and go to the college campus. So when there are sites around the county that still need additional cadets, like Shelby, I advertised, we have a spot in East Point. Shelby's from Chippewa Valley. And so she knew she needed to be responsible to get herself to East Point every single day in order to fulfill that obligation.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Any other questions? Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. I just want to commend each and every one of you for taking the step because that in itself is important. And you have had an experience that many of your colleagues haven't had. Thanks to the support from the MISD and from your local district. And it, obviously from all of you anyways, it sounds as though, and I'm excited about that, that we are going to have some great teachers in the pipeline here very, very soon. And for the children in the state of Michigan, that is a good thing. So I commend each and every one of you and obviously the MISD and the locals for stepping up and saying, okay, here's a problem. How can we now look at this differently and move forward? And you tweak the program as you have to. So thanks for coming and thanks for sharing your stories.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Any other comments from board members? Just a few things.
I just want to say, thank you, and what an amazing way to start the day.
It is an amazing way to start today. And I just want to underscore one great quote, kids can be a lot. We appreciate you young people acknowledging that kids can be a lot because we think about that a lot. And though you don't see yourselves, you don't really see yourselves in the mirror, you see yourselves, you see through a window at other kids regarding that. We see it a little bit mirror-like in a fashion. We also appreciate the fact that you are the next generation of our outstanding profession. And we appreciate that enormously, enormously. To whom much is given, much is required. And we expect a lot from you as we hand off that torch. I understand what you mean about kindergarten, but there's some brilliant kindergarten teachers in our midst, and what a wonderful thing that is. To Superintendent DeValle, to Dr. Fly, to Ms. Strobeck, just a few things. First of all, thank you for engaging with our Explore Program Grant to move students into teaching. We appreciate your Grow Your Own Grant, support staff into teachers. We're looking at planting seeds in a whole host of different ways because we have a profession to rebuild. A profession that got back on its heels, a profession that we are rebuilding as we speak. So we appreciate it and we appreciate you. And just one more thought on time, that summer school and summer camp are logical extensions of a too skinny school year. And if we are going to beat back summer slide and continue to improve our student achievement, we're going to have to address that 11 and a half week gap for those children who struggle profoundly, who start school behind and who in many cases continue to slip further behind. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Board, it is 10:37. The next item on the committee of the whole agenda is a presentation on Michigan Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math MySTEM Efforts and Updates. This presentation will feature information on MySTEM. We welcome our presenters. Dr. Delsa Chapman, Deputy Superintendent in the Division of Educator, Student, and School Support. Sarah Sherpicky, Director of the Office of 60 by 30 in the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity. And Megan Schrobman, the Executive Director of the MySTEM Network in the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity. This is an informational presentation. No board action is required. Please welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Vice, and good morning, board. Today I am joined by the partners of the MySTEM Network by way of the Department of Labor, Economic, and Opportunity, or as we affectionately call, LEO. Together, we will provide efforts and updates specific to STEM education via the network here in Michigan. As noted here, we will share what the network is comprised of and who is involved in the work. Secondly, we will highlight collaboration in action across the 16 regions within the network with specification of how the efforts impact K-12 learners in Michigan through innovative learning experiences. Additionally, we will share the fiscal year '22 outcomes specific to funding, partnerships, and service to the field. We will conclude our sharing today with fiscal year '23 goals and the premise for next steps. And now we will hear from our partners, Megan and Sarah.
Good morning, everybody, and thank you so much for having us. I'm Sarah Sherpicky. I'm the Director of the Office of 60 by 30 at the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity. You'll also be hearing from me, again, a little later today in a presentation with Director Corbin. We're just grateful for the opportunity to share this critical work with you and also delighted that we made it in time to sort of hear from those students. That really is a nice way to start the day. I wish we brought some students, but maybe next time. So Megan, thanks.
We have some student pictures. I'm Megan Schrobman, MySTEM Network Executive Director and at the Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity. And like Sarah said, and also, we're excited to bring this to you today. We last came to the state board right before the pandemic, when MySTEM was just about a year old. And so we've done some fine tuning of our vision since that time and wanted to share that with you today. So thanks for having us. MySTEM really came to be, as you can see up there, we first had a governor's council established in 2015. That was really brought about because of the reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. We had previously received some federal dollars to support math and science teacher professional development. And so this council was charged with taking a look at what we needed to do since that funding was going to be re-appropriated. Since 2015, they've set and recommended a statewide STEM strategy that then goes out to both the Departments of LEO and MDE in order to carry that out. So there's 15, oh, sorry. There's 15 members on the council. 11 of those are voting members. And four of those come from our policymakers. And it's very specific. As Sarah mentioned, she's the Director of 60 by 30. And we're both in the Office of Prosperity because we see STEM as key for growing the next generation of our talent, not only for STEM careers, which are the fastest-growing and most prosperous careers, opportunities that are available, but because every single occupation moving forward is being impacted by our high-tech revolutions. And STEM is, provides that unique opportunity because students are inherently born naturally curious about the world, that it really provides a platform for engagement in their everyday learning and hope for the future and how they can participate in that space.
I'll just add, so in addition to serving as the Chair of the MySTEM Advisory Network Council Network, I also serve as the Executive Director of the State Workforce Board. And so that was, that's a really intentional sort of design choice because as you'll hear from Megan, you know, to really create these high-quality 3P experiences takes finding real partners in the community, right? This is taking learning into multiple settings. And it also requires being informed by the sort of workforce needs of our state and our local communities. And so that's a really direct link that we try to draw through these sort of like, connecting these different entities.
And then there's a 16-region network across the state that then we grant these funds through in order to carry out that statewide STEM strategy. So you'll see throughout our presentation that the work is really about convening different partners across the different sectors, not only in workforce, but across different areas of learning. And how do we work as in building that coalition to move forward a statewide STEM strategy? So overall summary, right, we want to connect learners with that STEM education so that they are prepared for those high-wage, high-demand careers of the future. And we really want to make sure that we are lifting up the local needs and those local assets and resources that they define their economy around. And that can be used then as a rich, authentic way to engage in their learning. So overall, the statewide STEM strategy talks about four pillars. We do not feel anymore in today's day and age that we can't live without a STEM culture, right? It's just not acceptable anymore for people to walk into rooms and say that they were never good in math or that they don't like math. It's foundational for so many things. And we believe that all students can be successful in that space. So that's really kind of the overall goal. And these two inner pillars are where we spend our time in efforts with our grant dollars. So how are we looking to empower our STEM teachers by connecting them with the unique opportunities that their community brings for learning around their business, their businesses and economic, but also the natural resources that exist? Those two things work together in order to ensure high-quality STEM experiences. So we want those STEM experiences to be a shared vision across every single space where learning happens. So this slide is actually from an NSF grant that we've been participating with for about seven years now. It's focused specifically about achieving coherence and equity across our state systems. And so we believe that in order to have a shared statewide STEM strategy and vision, we really need to make sure that we are connecting across every single one of these learning settings. So when we say we're bringing and convening partners across different sectors, we are also considering all the spaces where learning happens. And we know that the classroom space is only about 20% of a child's lived experience. So how do we connect? Part of what we talk about is how we take their everyday family settings or cultural backgrounds and make sure that that's recognized in that formal system as well. So to understand what we're trying to move forward in terms of the actions of empowering educators and connecting with business and industry, we have to truly have a picture of what that high-quality STEM learning experience looks like. Now, we really focus on STEM, right? And that's because of the engaging, the engaging context, right, that you might learn all your learning through. But what we are really referring to today is the research literature around place, problem, and project-based learning experiences. And those show up in the research literature in every single discipline. So it's not just good for STEM learning, it's good learning for all disciplines. And so we're just going to refer to this as 3P. Sometimes we say 4P because if you talk in the pre-K space, we also have play-based learning, just another P. And if you are looking at career and technical education, they often talk about work-based learning, right? We view these as all a continuation of the same thing, right? As you start with play, you come into the world, you are naturally observing and tactile with everything that's out there. And as you get older, that play only becomes maybe more dangerous or your toy is much more expensive, right? But we are, we're essentially playing all the way through in a very scaffolded approach. But the important piece is taking that relevant context that's probably local to your place. And why we're focused on 3P as that strategy is because it cuts across both workforce and education. So I spoke just about how it's really engaging for students, and that's about 90% of the battle. But if you're bringing those local place examples, students are becoming much more aware of what opportunities are available in their local communities. And they are essentially saying, and trying out those careers as they are going through their learning and saying, this is where I could make a difference. Or maybe I don't like this at all, right? Which is also a very critical piece to learn. But the idea is through that flexible, cross-disciplinary way of learning, they are learning transferable skills that are going to serve them in no matter what discipline they end up in.
Thank you, Megan. The student experiences that will be highlighted on the next few slides confirm MySTEM's alignment to the Michigan Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. The goals noted here come to life as Michigan learners engage in experiences that lead to a greater chance to complete a positive K-12 experience in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, or what we call STEM. It prepares them for future opportunities.
Thanks, Delsa. And I believe we had a handout. Is that in their packet?
It should be, if not, we will.
STEM talking points to go along with that. If not, we can hand it out to you later, which really calls out again each one of these goals as well as the LEO state plan as well, so how it jointly works together. So I'd like to share with you just briefly a picture of what this looks like in a couple of our communities. Specifically, how they're using the local examples and resources that are available and connecting it to the potential opportunities in the community. So in the Godwin Heights School District in Wyoming, Michigan, STEM at North Godwin is a focus for their elementary building, grades three through five. And they're really focused on bringing challenges to their students that they see in their local communities and providing hope for students in that they can figure out how to solve those strategies themselves. and providing hope for students in that they can figure out how to solve those strategies themselves. And what's really exciting about the plan at North Godwin is that the administrators have completely planned out, as you can see here, a three-year strategy of how they are starting to shift the entire elementary school in order to bring these STEM challenges to life. And we want to take a look at this where, where there's this clear vision set forward, where they're bringing in school and community values. They have house teams where they build their different identities and they take on a service project from the community. For the pictures that are on the next slide, it's from a prototype challenge where students have been asked, how can I design a better caring experience, right? And so, they're, they're working through these Twenty-First Century Learning Skills and they're building their STEM identity through these design cycles. And you can see some of the examples of what they're doing as they're working through as a team to build their prototypes. They had lanyards created that Gordon Food Service helped donate so that students are like, I am a STEM innovator. And then, you see some of the projects that they, they've designed and come up with different solutions for this. I think what's really exciting here is that you see administrators providing the support during the school day for their educators to become comfortable shifting to this way of engaging in their school community. The next example we have is focused more middle school and high school. And this is in our eastern Upper Peninsula. Originally, this, this example we bring to you because it's been growing for many years. Originally started by one classroom teacher. Dr. Rice, you look like you really want to say something.
I was gonna say, it's been growing for several years and I'm watching what's in his hands.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, right? So, again, I think, I think what you see is the difference between two communities, first of all, right? They're very much leaning into, in this case, what natural resources are right outside their door. So, that's the asset, the place that they're bringing, bringing to it. The other piece that we wanted to highlight here is that we've been working very closely with the Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy. So, how do we as MySTEM help to grow this as a statewide STEM strategy, right? So, Eagle has a Michigan Water Strategy Plan where part of their goals was to create curriculum around how we move forward to Great Lakes Lake Water Literacy Principles. And we said, you know, that's an excellent context for engaging students in learning. And recently, just last week, actually, we participated as part of their Great Lakes and Freshwater Week. They were highlighting the careers that exist in keeping our waters fresh, right? It's something that Michigan's known for, not only for tourism, but making sure that we survive as humans, right? So, we essentially can work together. We've pooled our funds and over the past couple of years, we've also worked with the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative out of the EPA and are going to have our project highlighted in their congressional report this year. And it's because we're one of the few states that's actually been able to demonstrate that student learning around Great Lakes principles actually can, can contribute to their future workforce goals. So, through this work, it's grown over the years. It's moved from one classroom kind of doing water sampling every single year, you know, water quality tests, to now across the entire region and other parts of the state, starting to grow this MyWaterNet piece where the students are actually building the sensors as well as installing them and interpreting the data. So, you can see where they're, they're getting some computer science exposure, big data exposure. I recently toured up there last month and they even informed me that members of the local community are watching for when the temperature changed so they know when the smelt are running, so you don't have to go out and check every single day. They're using those data sources set up by our students. And what's really exciting is in the last few years, Lake Superior State University has now become a huge partner in the region in growing a CTE and dual enrollment opportunity. And I'll let Sarah speak to this for a little bit first and then I'll share a picture of the students that presented recently to our teachers.
Yeah, I, I, part of why we're sort of particularly excited about CTE and dual enrollment, I'm like putting on my Sixty by Thirty hat again, is because participation in high-quality CTE and dual enrollment programs leads to stronger enrollment in post-secondary opportunities and stronger sort of persistence and completion there. And partly, it's because kids have more knowledge about what it is they want to do or I think, as Mr. Bullock mentioned, sometimes what they don't want to do. And so, they're, they're making really informed choices about what's the right post-secondary path for them. And so, so building all of this alignment and energy sort of helps us reach kind of multiple goals at the same time.
Yeah, and I think what's really exciting about this three-P strategy, right? Is that, you know, at the department, you have the Michigan Career Development Model, right? We're talking about how, how do students become aware of careers? How do they start to explore them? And then, what's the preparation piece, right? And what I believe we've hopefully shared with you today is that beginning in elementary school, when you do that three-P approach, you can do those pieces seamlessly. They don't become contrived experiences or where you stop the instruction and then you have a career exploration opportunity, right? It's, it's very seamless where the context that you are engaging with is a career opportunity, right? Students are getting to try it on for a short amount of time and say whether they like that or not. As we get up into the higher grades, right? They become opportunities to either get dual enrollment credit, have internships or apprenticeships. They can, essentially, the sky's the limit, right? When you start to bring community partners together and really think about the opportunities that can be connected. So, I just wanted to share a picture of the students that actually were a part of this project. They presented at this last March's Michigan Science Teachers Association Conference about their program, about the WaterNet system and how other educators could become involved and their work. Eagle actually changed a, like a, I'm gonna say it wrong. It's like an environmental indicator-like measurement this year. And these students were the first ones to actually report to Eagle that they had found essentially contaminations above the limit that it was supposed to be there. And Eagle wasn't quite ready yet for that report to happen. So, the students have actually been working very closely with Eagle and now the EPA on what do we do when we find this. And what they saw in their diagrams is increased conductivity, which they trace back to a massive snowfall event and an over-dumping of salting on the roads. And so, they have been doing their community outreach, informing businesses on different ways that they might be able to protect the freshwater resources that are available in their community. So, when you look at these projects, you really see where they are growing their disciplinary literacy. I think you could see very much our career and college-ready standards showing up in the types of opportunities where they are presenting their, their knowledge and the different means of presenting that information, but also the types of resources that they've brought together in order to share that information. They've had to have solid science and mathematics understanding and they're dabbling into computer science as well. So, are really excited to see the opportunities that are available.
Can I just, one, one point on that is those are the type of skills also that we're hearing at the Workforce Board that, that we need more of in Michigan, right? It's not just the technical skills, but all of the skills that those kids learn by saying, here's a problem. What should I do about it? Who can I work with on it? What would my next step be? They're, they're so, they're driving so much of their own learning, of course, with the support of the adults around them. And that's the kind of thing that's also going to make them successful, again, in whatever post-secondary path or career they go into.
Thanks, Sarah. I think I'll go back to kind of the piece that North Gladwin has set up. We are providing hope for the students, right? That they can actually solve these problems that sometimes seem overwhelming in our communities. So, this slide is meant to capture how we use the state funds in order to encourage this sort of transformation in our communities and how we're looking at learning. Or really, what we'd like to say is those sorts of learning opportunities tend to happen outside of school or in elective-type opportunities in the formal system. How can we get the full system really sharing in, in this overall vision? So, I've already mentioned the sixteen-region network that we have in place. It's their role to really, again, connect and convene the partners in the community to lift up those natural resources and assets that exist in their communities that can be used as those learning contexts. So, that's Section Ninety-Nine S. Five and Six in the policy language that, that puts out those grant funds. Then, we have the Advisory Council Grants. For every year, the council makes recommendations on how to spend that. POTA Funding, Section Ninety-Nine S. Three and Four. MDE also has assigned consultants to each one of those action areas. So, for the past two years, we've granted three action areas, mathematics, science, and computer science, in that we are working on taking the individual disciplines and how do we look across the state, all of the partners that are interested in those education spaces, and build a plan that's going to move us towards, right, this three-P future. And then, we also are working at the individual district level. And so, for example, that Eagle from Students to Stewards Grant, we have jointly funded, so not just Ninety-Nine S. Seven funding, but also the EPA funding and local state funds through Eagle, in building a series of playbooks. So, how might the local community set their vision forward, just like what you saw in North Godwin? What are we going to be about in our community? And start taking, laying out those steps in order to provide the support to make those shifts. What we've seen across the districts that have started down this path is that the educators become really excited. We've seen student wait lists for the courses or the programs that are offering this. And, and we've seen kids show up for that class or course and skip potentially the rest of the day, right? So, yeah, we gotta work on that, right? But, but all really positive signs that really reflect the literature on why this would be a great practice. So, so we're really trying to be strategic with our limited funds in lifting this up at the local level, the region level, and then statewide as well.
Thank you, Megan. We'll go now into talking about outcomes and next steps. So, as a member of the MySTEM Advisory Council Evaluation Committee, I have the opportunity to monitor the measures specific to funding, partnerships, and participants served. As noted here on this slide, our data-driven outcomes for fiscal year twenty-two include a distribution of more than three million dollars in grant funds that Megan just shared with us, which increase access to STEM programs in robotics, engineering, and bioscience, along with computer science and coding to students in various Michigan regions. It is important to highlight the one-point-three-five-million dollars that catalyzed, that were catalyzed in outside funding from more than forty organizations leveraged by grantees. In partnership with MDE, the network developed a computer science vision and a statewide strategic plan. That statewide strategic plan is noted and components thereof in the handout that you were just provided. We also had an, an opportunity through that plan to increase access to computer science programs by a hundred and fifty percent. These efforts and measurable, measurable outcomes impacted and served over eighteen-hundred schools. Moving from outcomes to fiscal year twenty-three goals and next steps, we want to share the following. We will focus all grants on three-P learning. There continues to be an earnest effort to invest in strategic partnerships to deliver high-quality three-P and yes, sometimes four-P STEM experiences, along with efforts to inspire STEM engagement by connecting learning to career pathways, as Sarah so gracefully shared with us. In sum, we endeavor to measure education and workforce, workforce outcomes in alignment with the state's Sixty by Thirty and federal STEM goals. And now, Megan and Sarah will share efforts that prompt what's ahead.
So, this slide is what's ahead, but also from the past year. So, we were asked, invited by the National Academies of Science, Engineering, and Medicine to present on state levers of growing equity across PK-12 STEM education systems. And out of, out of that presentation, that committee work, it's the first time ever that the National Academies has actually gone out to communities and visited. And we were one of four states that were able to host them. And they came to one of our Students to Stewart sites in the Western UP and spent two days there visiting. This fall, they hope to release their summary report and they will be coming back to Michigan. And it is a public meeting. It will be back in the Western UP thanking that community for contributing to their report in order to share the release of this grant. We're very excited about the opportunities that that says for us in our state, but also how we can continue to make sure that our statewide STEM strategy can learn and grow from the recommendations that are in that report. In the past year, we were also invited to join the White House in the signing of the Chips in Science Act, as well as a celebration around the Inflation Reduction Act. I think what's really exciting about these opportunities is that not only are they providing great investments in terms of our workforce and talent, but we've been encouraging our congressional leaders to really consider where student voice and can be a part of the design of those solutions. So, again, like our three-P message here, how can, from the federal government, we receive some opportunities to provide student solutions to, to the pieces that are being worked for in that piece? Do you want to add anything on those items? The U.S. Department of Ed also in December, actually November, I think they also hosted a web, webinar on STEM convergence, again, directly speaking to problem, project, and place-based strategies for instructing for all the reasons that we shared here today, greater, greater efficiency and effectiveness in terms of learning the standards and student engagement, but also direct links to opportunities in the workforce. I want to make sure that we also speak to the fact that a lot of times, so I shared a little bit how the students have public displays of their knowledge, okay? If, if we very intentionally think about the older students working with the younger students, they are also having opportunities to be teachers through that as well. And that is one piece that the council is very clear about is that if we want to grow these STEM industries, we need to make sure that we are recognizing STEM educators as part of that workforce. So, we, so we very much see the three-P method as being a way that students are not only learning about those other like STEM workforce-type areas of careers, but through their three-P actions, they are actually being educators. So, we're really looking at and watching the federal dollars on how they can be used. And the federal government is encouraging districts to think about how they use their dollars in order to transform in this three-P way. And then, finally, the Office of Science, Technology, and Policy at the White House is redoing their federal STEM plan this year. And we participated in their office hours and providing input on the direction of that plan. And so far, all of our strategies seem in line with what they are looking to do. And we are, we are also using the, the current plan as a model for what we might be able to do across our other government agencies. So, I think in summation, Michigan is on the path to be ready to meet not only what our federal government is looking for, but what our state is looking to do in keeping our communities being very vibrant and vital places where all people want to live, work, and grow.
Thank you, Dr. Rice.
Thank you, presenters. We appreciate you. Board members, questions or comments? Ms. Lipton?
Thank you very much. Appreciate all your work. Got a couple of questions. So, can you just help elaborate on what the, what the on-ramp for community participation would look like? In other words, is it the communities reaching out to you with this problem? Is it student to teacher to then to you? Are you then conversely finding like, oh, there's a problem here? Let me see what I can, so what, what practically is the on-ramp for this relationship?
Do you want me to take this or?
I think all of the above. I think all of the above, right? We're very much working on a networked approach, right? So connecting and bringing together partners in the region is the charge given through one of our grants in order to have that 16-region network be possible. So we do expect through that grant that they will be out knocking on people's doors, calling them up, offering this, you know, state-provided service, really, right? In order to connect. But it goes both ways, right? Schools that are looking for STEM education improvement opportunities, summer camps, you know, funding opportunities, they are also reaching out. Those 16 regions are fiscaled either through our ISDs or Institutions of Higher Ed. So there's also researching or reach out and connections happening that way as well. It's very much set up to be a top-down and bottom-up approach.
That's great. Thank you. Are you doing any work for the component of the on-ramp that involves a teacher, sort of thinking through this relationship? Is there any interface with teacher preparation programs so that this is something that a young teacher or even a seasoned teacher going in for some more continuing education would be taught? Or is it something that they're already getting in the teacher prep programs?
So that's an excellent question. Do you want to speak anything to it?
Sure. So not specifically through required teacher preparation, Ms. Lipton, but through program offerings, through summer professional learning, as well as embedded throughout the school year by way of what Leo offers through the MySTEM Network. The department is able to communicate to our education preparation programs and to our local districts what those opportunities are. There are many districts that often look to us to be able to help them shape how they can move forward with STEM. But we are making better connection early on through our ed prep programs to open up that professional learning to candidates that have not fully become teachers, but they may have the opportunity to be a part of the professional learning experience.
And then I would also just add that in each one of our criteria, right, in order to receive these funds, they're required to have Institutes of Higher Ed at the table to be part of their regional strategic planning or statewide strategic planning. And I also mentioned the fiscals that are Institutes of Higher Ed. Most of those tend to be located directly with their schools of education as well. So there's meant to be this, you know, structurally, in the way that we've set it up, this constant dialogue of how are we collectively, from the moment students enter the school system, right? Or at a moment they're born, they are being met with this shared vision for what high-quality STEM looks like.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Any other board members' questions or comments?
Comment. Thank you.
Please, Ms. Snyder.
So I'm hoping to be able to articulate this well. But so one of the things, and thank you for the presentation. Anytime we have multiple opportunities for students to explore, that's a positive thing, right? So but as you spoke about the program and throughout the things, you said something about, you know, we can't have students that say math is not my thing, if you will, but to understand it on a fundamental level, foundational level. And I'm going to use literacy as the changes that happened in literacy over several decades, right? This idea where we moved away from explicit instruction. We kind of said, hey, let's look at some pictures, sit in a corner with a nice warm-bunny blanket and guess and cue. So we knew that that didn't work in literacy. And the way that we changed the development of curriculum and how that sort of played out over a number of decades was a really huge negative on the whole. Same thing is happening in math. I was just at a local school district where I heard a math instructor that really did sound like they were, like, lovingly pitched this idea of this new math curriculum that also, in combination with Common Core standards and ways to learn math, right, it's changing. So this idea of, we teach you five different ways to do this one problem. You choose to solve it and show your work. I don't care which one you use. And that translates to success in a student's mind of, I can do math, right? So that's going to translate to STEM for sure in the long term. When we have students that feel literate in math and confident that they can do it, then they can look at an option like this and say, I'm a STEM student. And yet, we're seeing the same thing in literacy that happened about 50 years ago start to happen in math. We're saying, this is how we teach math, and this is how we expect students to demonstrate understanding and competency in math. And so you're going to see less students say, I can do math, and therefore, I'm a STEM student. And so what I'd ask you to do, and all of the things that you're already doing, I understand there's a lot here, enter that conversation, right? So you're not, you can't tell local school districts what curriculum to choose. And yet, the curriculums they choose will make all the difference in the success in what you're doing now and in the future. So that's all I want to put out there.
Thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. Dr. Pugh?
Thank you for this very important topic. I call myself a cool nerd with my backgrounds. But and so, of course, want more STEM steam, Mitch. But just thinking about my ride here in from Saginaw today. My first cup of coffee, I stopped at McDonald's. And the person who was working there asked me if I was going to be using the electronic system. When I got to the window, I told her, no, I actually appreciate being able to interact with you. Then I made a phone call, and someone answered the phone, and I did not recognize their voice. And I said, oh, I didn't even know if this was you or not. They said, yes, my asthma has been triggered. Actually, since the forest fires in Canada, and, you know, here in Michigan, we saw the highest rates, as well as orange skies in New York, highest rates of particulate matter and across maybe the world. Yeah, across the world, we were seeing some of the worst air quality levels. So just knowing how important this topic is and wondering, one, are we moving fast enough when we talk about AI? Do you see us moving fast enough? And just telling a little bit more about how what we're doing helps our students to be prepared for this world. And I use a projection, 2030, there's companies such as Amazon who are saying that they will have more robots than people working. Then thinking about 2030, when we talk about climate action and if we don't address drivers of climate change, then, you know, they may be irreversible, the impacts. And good to hear that the students are looking at the chloride levels in the water systems. But how are we making sure that we're preparing our children to save us? But also, one last thing that I will say is that in addition to the alignment to MDE top 10 goals, I would add goal number three, which is safe, healthy, I'm missing one, environments, especially when we look at our asthma rates here in our state and the fact that if we can help to build scientists to reverse some of the things that we're seeing, that also impacts the health of our people.
I'll start, if that's okay. Thank you for the layered question. I think part of why I'm so passionate about STEM education is because of those skills that it helps young people to develop that are transferable sort of across careers and disciplines and will empower them to deal with the, like, very wicked problems that you're describing, right? So we don't, there's not a, like, straight-line solution to any of what you just described. And so our sort of democracy and what we meet are people who have strong critical thinking skills, who can work with people, and people who are different from them, can communicate effectively sort of across ideas and differences, who are creative in figuring out new solutions to problems and are driven to sort of learn as they go. And so I think what we need to be preparing our kids for is a time of rapid change and sort of nimbleness, not a, like, this, you must learn this exact piece of content. I mean, we have to do that, too. And so, but I think the only hope we have of preparing kids for this time of change sort of is really thinking about those capacities. And I think the three P pedagogy that is intrinsic in STEM learning is an important part of that solution, right? So it's less about exactly what job will they have, and it's more about how are they going to help us navigate the future?
Thank you very much. Ms. Lipton, a second and final bite of the apple, please.
Final bite over here.
Oh, you have a question. Okay.
There's a first, no, you know, what if there's a first bite? Go ahead, please.
Thank you for the presentation. This is wonderful. I'm very excited about these opportunities in STEM. And STEM is very broad, but I really appreciate the information you have under CTE and dual enrollment. And not only career-wise, but the things they learn, you know, from eco-sci, environmental sci, in a personal way, because it can help them better understand their footprint in the world, the beautiful biodiversity within their habitat or community, and the things that they do every day to affect what's going on within their community as far as biodiversity and the possible decline that they could speed up. On the career side of things, I wanted you to speak more about the collaborations for the apprenticeships and the internships, the companies that you guys have worked with and collaborated with for the youth and how those collaborations are working.
Sure. So that's an area that we are still really hoping to grow. And I know it's something that the Workforce Board has been working on for a long time. Actually, just had a meeting yesterday morning with OCTE because a lot of companies are still looking at, you know, under 18, you know, what's kind of the insurance, you know, the liability of having those individuals available. So where we've had the greatest success right now is actually in a GIS program, where students have also dual-enrolled through that program. ArcGIS is free to most of our education institutions. And we've seen things in southeast Michigan where they have been working with city planners, same thing in the Upper Peninsula, doing any sort of mapping projects imaginable, right? They don't have to be as worried about liability, right? When you are sitting in front of the computer. And what's been happening is the university professors actually educate, you know, the high school students, and then they have an opportunity to do an internship or apprenticeship throughout the summer, should they choose to do that. M dot track program is another one that's been happening for years, right? And so what we're really trying to do is help people see where these types of programs can be connected to every single opportunity. So we're starting to see through lines, right? Where, like, the teacher professional development around this three P pedagogy is then attached to maybe a specific discipline. So with the GIS piece, they might have done some of the computer science professional learning and thinking about where that shows up in their classrooms. And then they're also connected to the business at the same time. So the educator may go and do an externship, learning about that local business, and then that local business then provides an internship or apprenticeship opportunity for students. So we're trying to, like, connect these different pieces so that schools and communities aren't saying, picking and choosing those pieces, but instead getting a complete through line of not over that, not only that career cluster, right, for the student, but also for the educator to have that relevant example to then grow their three P pedagogy.
Thank you. Dr. Robinson, then Ms. Lipton.
I don't have a question.
Is there any way that MDE can better help to build those partnerships or those internships, you know, those collaborations?
Definitely. I think even just sharing in the messaging that that's a really key component of learning, not only for our youth, but also for the educators, to see, you know, their, you know, discipline in an applied context is really key, right? We don't tend to spend our state professional development dollars on those pieces, but seeing that as really relevant learning and being able to communicate that that's really important and to link it up to that pedagogy, I think is a really key place of where we are right now in terms of development.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tilly. Ms. Lipton?
My question was asked about the teachers.
Okay. Thank you very much. Presenters, thank you so much. We appreciate your time. We're going to do a second Leo show. Next item on the committee of the whole agenda is a presentation on Michigan's top 10 Strategic Education Plan Goal Six, Increase the Percentage of Adults with a Post-Secondary Credential. During this presentation, we will share information on Michigan's top 10 Strategic Education Plan Goal Six, Increase the Percentages of Adults with a Post-Secondary Credential. We will share updated metrics and review MDE's contribution to this goal area. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Susie Cornell, Chief Deputy Superintendent in the Michigan Department of Education, Susan Corbin, Director of the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity, backed by popular demand, Sarah Sherpiky, Director of the Office of 60 by 30 in Leo, and Janine Hatum, Director of High School Innovation at the Michigan College Access Network. This is an informational presentation, and no board action is required. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Presenters, welcome and re-welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Good morning, Dr. Rice, and good morning to the members of the State Board of Education. I'm pleased to be accompanied with Director Susan Corbin from the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity, along with Sarah Sherpiky, who is the Director of the Office of 60 by 30 at Leo, and Janine Hatum, Director of the High School Innovation at the Michigan College Access Network. Last time we were here to present on Goal Six was in April of 2022. So we're just delighted to have this opportunity to update you on Goal Six, which is to increase the percentage of adults with a post-secondary credential. With that, I am going to turn it over to Director Corbin.
Well, thank you very much for your time today. Sarah and I are happy to be here again this year. And I really enjoyed that my schedule allowed me to spend the morning with all of you and to hear the presentations from the students this morning, also to get an update, hear Megan directly give an update on what's happening in MySTEM across the state. And I felt a strong kinship with the students. My first job was in high school, working in a daycare center. And to this day, I hands-down say it was the most difficult job I've ever had in my life, getting 15 three-year-olds down for a nap. Most challenging thing I have ever done in my life. But I appreciate those young people and their commitment to our youth and to pursuing careers in education. So the Michigan Department of Labor and... I think you're... Yeah. So the Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity, Leo, has been working hard to expand economic opportunities for all Michiganders. We are focused on meaningful investments that support our efforts to close the skills gap, increase access to education, and make Michigan more competitive for economic growth. At Leo, we will continue to build innovative strategies that support employers and employees. Our mission is to expand economic opportunity and prosperity for all. And we really try to keep our vision in mind, which is to make Michigan a place where all people, places, and communities have the means to reach their full potential. To do so, we've created a strategic plan that aligns very strongly with the governor's vision, as well as the latest economic data. We're working on building a stronger, more resilient, and more equitable state of Michigan. This plan will result in better jobs, better skills, more people re-entering the labor force, and more people staying in Michigan or moving to Michigan. It will result in a better economy, one that expands economic opportunity and prosperity for all, driving educational attainment and increasing workforce participation. for all, driving educational attainment and increasing workforce participation. To get us there, we're focusing our efforts on the work that will best serve those who need it the most. This includes coordinating efforts to educate Michiganders and grow the middle class by removing barriers to employment, creating better jobs, and supporting small businesses across our state, closing equity gaps, protecting and enhancing the health, safety, and economic security of all workers, and building stronger communities. And our strategic plan plays a pivotal role in accomplishing these strong, yet attainable goals. First and foremost, we're focused on efforts that create pathways to higher education for more Michiganders. And there's good data to back up why this is so important. Median annual wages, wages increase with higher educational attainment. Outcomes for recent graduates show significant increases in wages with post-secondary education. When I travel across the state and I show this slide, the one point that I tell people, if you walk away with nothing else, if you look at what a person earns who's received only a high school diploma after five years, that is just under 20,000. As compared to somebody with a two-year associate's degree, after five years, they are earning double that, almost $40,000 a year. Post-secondary education is also strongly correlated with lower poverty rates in Michigan. Completing high school or an equivalent had a poverty rate nearly 13 percentage points less than for someone who does not complete a high school degree. Jobless rates tend to be much higher for individuals without a high school diploma or those without additional education beyond a GED. Labor force participation rates are also lower for these groups. As you can see from the highlight, these highlights, the data is very clear. Higher education levels are associated with better economic outcomes. The more education you have, the more likely you, you are to be in our labor force. Not only are you more likely to be in the labor force, but you are more likely to have a job with a strong wage. As of today, educational attainment, as reported by the Lumina Foundation, has Michigan at 50.5%. Governor Whitmer announced this state goal at her first State of the State address in 2019, when we were at 45%. It's a modest climb from the 45% we started at when the goal was announced, but we are still lagging when compared to the national average. We believe that everyone in Michigan has a right to an educational path to success. And we're working with a wide range of partners, both within and outside of state government, to put a college degree or a skill certificate within reach for more adults. So to talk more about our efforts in that area, I'd like to turn it back over to Sarah Sherpiky, the Director of our Office of 60 by 30.
Thank you. Can you? Thank you. So through the Office of 60 by 30, which was created in Leo to help sort of shepherd these programs, we're working to grow the number of working age adults who have a post-secondary degree or a credential of value to 60% by 2030. And as Director Corbin just said, we're at 50.1, no, 50.5 in the last data, which are technically 2021 data, most recently available. So as some of the data she showed you really demonstrate, this helps us to build a stronger Michigan by building, by closing the skills gap to ensure that our businesses are successful. Through having more accessible education and skills training, we're sort of preparing Michiganders with the skills they need for the jobs of today and the jobs of tomorrow. We're also increasing opportunity for Michiganders and their families to have greater access to education and skills for those bigger, better jobs, bigger paychecks, and making Michigan more competitive for inclusive growth. By increasing opportunity and providing Michiganders with that access and through some of our programs, a tuition-free pathway to education and skills, we're, we're really putting them on track for prosperity. Importantly, and we hear this from the students when we go talk with them, they're also really driven by their own personal sort of sense of pride and accomplishment in pursuing higher education. They're sort of fulfilling their own dreams, creating pathways they see for the future. When we talk with our Reconnect students, many of them are parents and the people they talk about are their children. Right? So yes, they want to, they want those better jobs, but this is really personal for them. So in September 2020, our office launched a one-time Futures for Frontliners Scholarship Program, which was created in gratitude to our state's frontline workers who put their lives on the line during the COVID-19 shutdown in spring of 2020. The scholarship provided eligible applicants with or without a high school diploma or equivalency a pathway to pursue a skills, skill certificate or an associate degree in any field at any one of Michigan's 28 community colleges or three tribal colleges. A few months later, in February 2021, we also launched Michigan Reconnect, a scholarship program for Michigan's adult learners, 25 and older, who already have a high school diploma or equivalency, but have not yet earned an associate degree. So this is an opportunity for them to either start school for the first time, or if they're among the one and a half million Michiganders who have some college and no degree, to return and finish what they started. The program also offers a blank slate for those with poor academic history, as their prior GPA isn't factored into their ability to sort of maintain the scholarship. Like Futures for Frontliners, Reconnect, Reconnectors can pursue their skill certificate or associate degree at any one of our, at any of our 31 community and tribal colleges. And there are more opportunities coming in the near future that will provide additional pathways to post-secondary credentials for Michiganders, some of which our office helps to administer, some of which, you know, we just always want to be emphasizing the creation of the Michigan Achievement Scholarship. We don't administer that, but we love it. So Governor Whitmer and the legislature sort of recently, or passed that last year, which will lower the cost for eligible students with a high school diploma or equivalency that they earn in 2023 or later to attend community college, a private college or, or public college or university, or a private training provider in the state of Michigan. Additional investments have also been made to develop a short-term training program, which we will administer to expand apprenticeship programs and increase the Going Pro Talent Fund, which assists employers in upskilling or reskilling and retaining their employees. So a little more detail on Futures for Frontliners helps, it helps Michigan workers and their families, again, who were sort of on the front lines during the pandemic, to provide this tuition-free pathway to college or to a technical certificate for those essential workers who don't have a college degree. In addition, it also provided a pathway for GED classes and preparation for adults who didn't yet have a high school diploma or equivalency, helping put them on a path to success as well. This program was the first of its kind in the nation and was inspired by the federal government's support for soldiers returning after World War II with, by providing educational opportunities through the GI Bill. It was a community effort to provide these opportunities for our frontliners in Michigan. So the window to apply for Futures for Frontliners is now closed. It was a one-time program, but we're pleased that the tens of thousands of people who took advantage of the opportunity are continuing and we're seeing those graduation numbers grow every semester. So following the success of the Futures for Frontliners program, we joined the governor to launch the Michigan Reconnect Program, expanding that tuition-free access to adults in Michigan 25 and older. To date, over 121,000 Michiganders have been accepted to the program. Over 27,000 of them have actually enrolled with their local community college, and over 2,800 have already earned a credential. So this is great news, and especially for that some college no degree population is really going to help us make progress towards 60 by 30. So there, these efforts are really critical in preparing Michiganders with the skills that we need so that they can be successful in the labor market today and tomorrow. I'll note the governor's latest budget recommendations include funding to expanding, to expand Michigan Reconnect down to age 21. This would open those tuition-free doors to community and tribal colleges to around 400,000 additional Michiganders. So we are thrilled and, you know, hope to see that finalized, to, you know, award, empower sort of even more people and create these pathways to success for them. So I've talked a lot about tuition, Futures for Frontliners and Reconnect, sort of at the heart, that's what they do is provide tuition support for students. But we know that there is a lot we need to do to sort of wrap around these students to really help them be successful. So we don't stop with just the tuition. That path to enrolling and graduating can be really challenging, and especially we know our adult students have a lot of additional responsibilities. So it's sort of a Herculean effort for them to additionally fit higher ed into their lives. So to help meet our goal and provide students with the support they need to successfully enroll in classes and sort of complete their, their certificate or associate degree program, we hired a team of 10 navigators. We also invested $430,000 into MCAN's College Completion Corps to support Michigan's adult students. So the navigators are available to help our Michigan Reconnect students as soon as they've completed the application, to provide a sort of network of support and assistance while they take the required steps to actually enroll in college and in classes. So we think of it a little bit like our job is to get them from that application through the doors of the community college. So there are many steps they have to take, and we help them achieve those that can be connecting them to resources, helping them figure out childcare, like helping them plan for their educational path. So these are really critical investments to help people successfully kind of, again, enroll and complete. Our navigators reach out to all of our Reconnect applicants, usually within 10 days of their application, and are actively working with over 24,000 of them. We also provided a total of $6 million in grants to our eligible institutions for the Michigan Reconnect and Futures for Frontliners Scholarship Program to promote student persistence and completion by removing barriers to education for our scholarship participants. So this created a pathway for additional financial support for participants who are continuing in at least their second semester of the program. So students, the institutions were granted the funds on a proportional basis, and they were allowed to sort of design their own programs for distributing these funds directly to students. Students could have received up to $550 in an academic year towards basic needs. So that's things like books, transportation, childcare, housing costs, food. And we're seeing it pay off in increased sort of semester-to-semester persistence rates. So it doesn't have to be a ton of money to make that difference for people when they are facing a crisis in order to sort of help them stay involved in education. So I want to share just a quote, our office received sort of via Grand Rapids Community College, a student wrote them, "Thanks to the Michigan Reconnect Program, I was afforded the opportunity to regain my scholarly momentum and hone in my focus on my academic career. The same day that I scheduled an appointment for a car repair shop, for car repairs at a local shop, I received a text about a program that provided emergency funding to students. I didn't think I would qualify, but to, with my current situation, but to my surprise, I fit the criteria and I was promptly contacted with further information. I received the text on Wednesday, was approved by Friday, and had the awarded grant in my account by Sunday." So that was a student at GRCC. At least nine of our institutions have reported fully or almost fully expending the funds, and we do expect most of the $6 million will be expended this year. So finally, I think it's, you know, it's great that this program exists, but of course we are focused on sort of continuous improvement and making sure that we are helping students overcome barriers to, to enrolling and completion. So our commitment as the office, again, we have the navigator support. We are continuing to advocate for additional barrier removal support for the colleges to serve the students. We're improving our sort of communication flows with our partner colleges to make it easier for students to, again, go actually all the way through the door of the college. And we do FAFSA workshops on a really, I think, weekly basis for our students. That's obviously a big step. They have to complete the FAFSA in order to be eligible for Reconnect. We're also starting, so we're sort of expanding how we communicate with our applicants who aren't quite yet enrollees with text messaging campaigns. We're doing a really exciting joint marketing campaign this summer with the community colleges, again, getting them closer to the colleges. And we've just launched a Reconnect Ambassador Program to increase student voice in our program. So we're recruiting current Reconnect residents or alumni to sort of serve as spokespeople for the program and also to tell us about their experience so that we can be designing a more, more and more effective program every year. One quick word on a couple of things that are coming soon, our short, our skills scholarship related to the Michigan Achievement Scholarship and the Reconnect Short Term Training Program. So these programs are targeted at career training programs. And I think that speaks to the fact that when we talk about post-secondary, we want to be really clear that that's any pathway for, for people. So it is not, while a lot of our efforts are focused on four-year and two-year community colleges, there's a lot of value in other types of certificates and credentials, and we want to help people find the right path for education for them. And so you can see these two programs that our office will be administering, they have slightly different eligibility. Reconnect eligibility matches that for our Reconnect students. The Michigan Achievement Scholarship is designed more towards students who are just completing high school or just completing their high school equivalency. And this will pay for the shorter-term credentials, either at a community college or at many private training providers, provided they meet certain eligibility criteria. We're expecting to launch these in fall of this year. And then I just wanted to share a note, you know, to achieve the goal of 60 by 30 is going to take more than the programs that we, that we've established today. Right? It is amazing that we are increasing enrollment of Michigan's adults, but we need to be sort of hitting on all cylinders. And so the way we think of this is, what are we doing for traditional age students? And what are we doing for adults? What are we doing about access and getting them to institutions? And what are we doing to make sure that at those institutions, they're successful? And so, so we're working on building out our strategies that are really around the metrics that we're sort of showing on this, on this chart. These are all metrics that our office is paying attention to for the state and that we're trying to invite additional kind of partners and stakeholders to find their way to supporting progress on these metrics as well. So you can see, we need kind of big jumps in a lot of areas, both in enrollment and in success. We hope that these updates are useful to you all. We really appreciate your partnership. And with the help of Governor Whitmer and our partners like those at MDE, we're going to continue to sort of make the progress that we need to so that we can fulfill our mission of reaching 60 by 30 and expanding economic opportunity and prosperity for all Michiganders. So I look forward to our continued collaboration as we build a more prosperous Michigan. Thank you.
And now I'll turn it over to our partners at MCAN.
Hello. Good morning. I feel like I am what's set, it's right between me and lunch, I feel like. So I better have some real good stuff for you. I'm sure you'll find a lot of this that you already, a lot that was already talked about, but some more. What my role here is to really have you think about some of the metrics that might, that are aligned to the, the Department of 60 by 30, but really on a, on a more deeper level that really focus on the priorities that we have at MCAN to really support the goal of 60 by 30. This slide is, seems really great, right? You look at it and we're like, oh, we have current data and we need this and it's pretty aligned. But I, what this, what this shows is the labor market. So as we have met the labor market needs for enrollment in all of these post-secondary college experiences, we know that people are going to be retiring and leaving. So it, we really need to increase the number of students that are entering into post-secondary in order to continue to meet the, the labor markets that come. So this just really focuses on this idea of increasing credentialing, really focusing on the credentials and the associates, because it takes less time. So if we don't dramatically increase those, then we are creating a more difficult problem to solve. We, all the metrics that I, I'm going to be talking about are focused on this, these priorities. One of our priorities is to really think about the college-going culture within schools and within our communities in Michigan. This, this information here is, is talking about the resident perspective from the This information here is talking about the resident perspective from the State of the State survey on the residents who think college is important to be successful in the labor market. The top line signifies the highest kind of parts of the Likert scale and the lower line is really just focused on the percent of responders who answered very likely. So, who answered very important. So 31.2% of Michigan residents really think that, that it's, college is very important to be successful in the labor market, whereas the top line talks about very or somewhat. So we know that there is a large number of people who think this is important, but the perspective, the perspective of residents has decreased and is also, we want to really focus on the idea of very important. The next slide is talking about residents who think that it's very likely that their child will get a college education. Again, 46.4 of respondents answered that they're very likely and the top one is the higher part. So it's very likely and likely. So it's together. So we know that there are people who believe in, in post-secondary and who want this to be a part of their children's lives, but we do know that it is, has declined in the past years. 28.1% of high school juniors met the ELA and math college readiness benchmarks. We have all heard this data before. We know that it's dipped a bit since COVID. And even though, although that colleges are not always requiring standardized test scores to be a part of their institution, we want to be mindful that standardized tests and college readiness benchmarks are indicators for a lot of the dual enrollment opportunities, the APIB. They are also really important for state, for, sorry, community-based and institutional aid. So while we know that, that admissions might have changed with the standardized testing, we know that it is still very important for students to have, to meet these benchmarks. But good news is that the percentage of students who enter college without needing remedial coursework has increased to 84%. So while we know that this is a high number, we want, we attribute this a lot to the policy and the shifts in the higher ed institutions. So a lot of the higher ed institutions took it upon themselves to really think about the initial courses that students were taking and be really creative and innovative about their approach for core requisite coursework so that the students are receiving credit and able to use their financial aid towards credit-bearing coursework. Some of this is just supplemental instruction in the courses, for example, of college algebra class, really focusing on increasing the number of credits for that class, having supplemental support while students are in that class so that they're more successful. What this does, what this does support is that developmental classes always, didn't always support the student and didn't always support their persistence because students were potentially undermatched in those courses. And students were using financial aid for non-credit-bearing courses, which is also not the best. We do focus on college affordability. One of the focuses on this is FAFSA completion and we, we heard that also for future for frontliners, all of this requires FAFSA completion. We have been pretty steady, maybe a little bit of a decline, but we are happy to say that possibly the first time since 2018, we have surpassed the numbers for FAFSA at this time in a given school year. So we are really encouraged by that and we, we are thinking that a lot of it has to do with the new Michigan Achievement Scholarship, that that was a requirement for that as well. When we talk about the goal of increasing students enrolling, enrolling in college, we have this data that shows that 60% students enroll within 12 months of graduation. And you can see this has steadily declined. We are anticipating that it is increasing. And what the persistence rate is determined by the state. So it's the students transitioning from court, through their coursework. In this case, it's earning 24 credits within 16 months of graduating high school, 63% completion, persistence, excuse me. And I want to spend a minute on this slide, starting at the right side with the 40.1%. These are students who, current graduates from the class of 2016. So if we think back, any student in the state of Michigan who graduated from the class of 2016, 40% of them have completed a post-secondary certificate or degree in six years. So 40% of our class of 2016 has something. If you look at the, the left side of this slide, 49.3, this is any student who took a seat at a community college in Michigan from anywhere, out of state, in-state, anywhere, could be a 20-year-old or a 99-year-old. Any student who took a seat in a Michigan community college, the 49% of them either transferred or earned some sort of certificate within six years. And that number increases to 77% at Michigan's public institutions. So what these metrics are really focusing is on institutional success rates, whereas on the right side, we're talking about the K-12, more focused on the high school or the K-12. We heard, we heard a little bit about the, the rate for post-secondary degrees certificate. We're talking about the 60 by 30. We heard that the, the rate, current rate is about 50.5. I want to emphasize that we at MCAN really focus on the credentials and search, the degrees. We are working with Leo actively to think through, how do we make sure that when we measure certificate programs, we're measuring it with quality in mind and we're measuring certificates that are really focused on what, what's quality and what's meaningful in the labor market. So our numbers are, until we can measure quality, we are, might be a little lower, but that's why, is we have not really determined a way to do that yet and actively working with Department of 60 by 30 on that as well. We do know that the number is slightly higher with the, the younger adults between 25 and 34 than the older ones between 25 and 64. All of these metrics, we really, we monitor, we monitor from a district perspective, ISDs, counties, we monitor it through our impact map. So if we, if you go online, impact map, it pops up and you can really dig into the same metrics that I discussed earlier. But one of the ways we also measure is through our FAFSA tracker. This is a really great way for schools to look at their own success against last year, this year, and also success against their counterparts in their counties. We do highlight a lot of the, the growth that we see and like to shout out certain schools for some, some really innovative practices that we're doing, that they're doing. So this is something that we, we are into. Schools can subscribe, anyone can subscribe and they get weekly updates on this. I do want to emphasize that when we think about all of the possibilities for students, our, our thoughts are always with providing students a menu of options so that they understand not just the labor market, but menu of options to understand their place and, and where they might match and fit. So when we're talking about a community college or credentials or, or post-secondary, anything post-secondary, as a high school support, we really focus on making sure students and families are well-informed on all of the possibilities for their students so that they are most likely to be successful. So we know that undermatching and overmatching leads to lack of success, so really focusing on those are, is priority for us. And that's what I got. Thank you.
And I will round out this presentation with MDE efforts around Goal 6. So you heard a little bit about what happens after a student leaves, the high school experience. I'm going to talk about what the department is doing to help students transition into post-secondary. So we have four ways on this particular slide that's focused on supports to students. The first one is career and technical education programs. I am not going to go all, I'm not going to go deeply into these programs for the sake of time. The board has heard this information before, but if you have any questions through Dr. Rice, I'm more than happy to answer any questions. But we have our career and technical education program or opportunities program of studies for our students. We also have early middle college, which you've heard a little bit about earlier today. We have our advanced placement programs and our college-level examination programs for our students to help them gain post-secondary credits. And then we have our student outcome resources and this is for students with special needs, students with IEPs. And so this program is to help these students transition either into post-secondary, to the community, or to the world of work. Here are some metrics associated with a career and technical education program. We have approximately 106,000 students enrolled in CTE in a given year. That's approximately 23% of our high school students. And of those high school students that participate, currently we have approximately 44,000 or almost 45,000 of CTE completers. Students enrolled in our early middle college, we have approximately 15,000 students enrolled in this program. And in our advanced placement program, we have almost 70,000 students participating in advanced placement. When we focus on students and preparing them for, to become an educator, there are two programs I just want to quickly highlight. The first one is through career and technical education programs. We have students that can earn a, an associate's degree or credential through early childhood. And then there's another one through young or early youth development. So those are two programs through our CTE, CTE program of study that helps students gain credentialing that they can experience while in high school. The second piece is the innovative program to expedite teacher certification process. This is similar to a permit program. And this is where businesses and industry can take someone who's had the business and industry experience for two years, go into a CTE program of study and then get their teaching certificate from that, similar to a permit. And that's it for now, Dr. Rice. I'm going to turn it back over to someone who's celebrating their birthday on Friday.
Dr. Carnell, turnabout is fair play. Dr. Carnell, directors, all, thank you for your presentation. Board members, questions or comments? Ms. Lipton?
Yes, thank you so much. This is something that is very near and dear to my heart. Got three questions. The first question I have is, it looks like the navigator to student ratio is pretty high. You've got 10 navigators, 24,000 students. So what are, what are your thoughts on, or what are your, your challenges or expectations in working on that ratio, given the importance of the navigator in the, in the process?
Yeah, that, that ratio really surprised me when I came into this role. What I found out is adults don't want to, some do. Most of our reconnect students don't want to spend like hours with a counselor. So a lot of what they do is via email, text messaging, really short phone calls and meetings. And so it's often like really direct, the adult is sitting down, they're working on their FAFSA and they have one specific question. And so it's, it's different from the type of support that we need, you know, need to provide to 17-year-olds. They know what their question is and they, so, so we have maybe a third who sort of engage, you know, and need a conversation or a meeting. And another third who have like one question and another third who we almost like, you know, we might hear from once before they, they actually enroll. So, so that higher caseload for now is working and it's more about connecting them to the resources at the college where they need to go to. But it's something we're, we are watching to see if that, if it starts to go beyond what we can sort of support.
So just as a follow-up, in my work with the Promise Zones in Michigan, we have found that a handoff or a soft handoff between the college access person to the success coach person, which would be the, what you're talking about, the completion corps piece, is really, really effective. So that the student always feels like their needs are being handled, not just getting to college, but through college, because the challenges are different and the questions are different. Do you do any of that in terms of interfacing between your navigators and then your completion corps?
Yeah, so it's a, it's a significant, well, there is two pieces, right? So the colleges also have those support people on staff regardless of just of what we fund. So our navigators are, do, are assigned to particular institutions and so they build the relationships with their institutions so that they can do those soft handoffs. With the completion corps and our partnership with MCAN, what we actually did, so the first time, we created the relationship, but we didn't necessarily, I don't know, provide sort of structure around that handoff. We actually are launching a second sort of set of completion coaches where their entire cohort, well, 90% of their cohort will be reconnect students so that we actually know exactly, sort of our reconnect navigators will know exactly who's in the success coaching cohort. And those cohorts are much smaller. I think like 150 is sort of the max size of those. So when the students are actually enrolled, they can get that sort of more in-depth success coaching that you, that you're talking about. Now, we only have funding, we have seven coaches that we're placing this year and so those are going mostly to some of the biggest community colleges, you know, just trying to hit the scale. But it's something we would love to continue to support and I believe the colleges appreciate. Janine, do you want to say anything else about that?
No, I, I think the, the feedback we've gotten was that colleges actually, community college actually want more of our completion coaches because it has done a great service for them.
Any thoughts on the peer-to-peer model? Students that have had that experience and then coming back and harnessing some of that expertise to the next generation?
I know some of the colleges have peer-to-peer supports. We, that's not something that right now we're looking at implementing at the state, but I think it is something we'll ask our ambassadors about as we sort of are bringing them on board.
Great, thank you. And then just one question in terms of the issue of stackable credentials. I know that's something that MCAN really talks about and I'm just thinking it would be helpful for, for people to hear that vision of the stackable credential model.
Yeah, so when we think about a credential, we want to make sure that there is a way for a student to be able to transfer its, for it to be credit-bearing, transferable, stackable, so that when they move or re-engage in college, they're able to use that credential. That's really important when it comes to equity and access. And also it really, we really want to focus on making sure that our students are not, that organizations are not using our students for a business. A lot of these organizations are for-profit, you, you know, charge our students for completing a certain credential that might not be of value to any other institution, to any other organization, but that particular organization. So we, we are really focused on making sure that if it is a credential, a lot of the, the best programs are through our community colleges. So if they want to do HVAC, if they want to do welding, there are high-quality programs at our community colleges that offer these potentially for free so that our students can access those. If you get an HVAC at some other company or entity, we, those aren't always, we're not able to, to measure quality, success, and a lot of, they charge a lot of money in a lot of cases for students. And so we want to make sure that students are aware and of all of their options and are able to take advantage of what they think is best for them. to take advantage of what they think is best for them.
I would just add, there is really a movement among some of our community college leaders to make sure that, you know, what have been traditionally different sort of sides of the house, so to speak, the kind of non-credit-bearing and the credit-bearing, don't kind of exist in isolation from each other. And so, they're working with faculty to say, if you are working on this industry-recognized credential or these, again, sub-degree certificates, make sure that you've figured out a way that we can all sign credit for them. I mean, they're being taught at the college. We can, you know, we can create that, and so then this, when the students say, I'm going to pursue more education, they're sort of already have those credits under their belt.
And then just finally, we at this table have heard a lot about the counselor shortage in the state. Could you all comment on your impression of the need for a dedicated college advisor or college counselor in creating that college-going culture?
Yeah.
That we referenced earlier.
You hit a spot, so let me, let me put my, I'm going to take MCAN's hat off and just put my high school administrator hat on. Thinking about my 2,000-student high school and the staffing, right? Not just staffing needs, but what people are asked to be doing and focused on within the walls of a school building is incredible. And when you think about the role of a counselor in so many cases in the state of Michigan especially that I've seen, they are testing coordinators, they are social workers in some cases, they are administrators in a lot of cases, they are working with social emotional challenges, they have lunch duties, they are tech coordinators and programmers for scheduling. So, when we think about the role of a school counselor, while all of those are very important, there are ways in which schools can rethink staffing to make sure that post-secondary becomes a priority, whether it be an additional staff, whether it be adjusting roles, really rethinking human capital in the school building is extremely important for school administrators to think about, for districts to think about, because a counselor doing all of those things and not focusing on post-secondary is a complete disservice to our students, and students don't always have the social capital and the network to allow them to make decisions absent of a school building. So, whether it's integrating things into English classrooms, into classrooms throughout the school day, whether it's post-secondary advising coaches, whatever it might be, just to pause and, and create the space for schools to rethink and relook at and interrogate what they currently have that exists and whether that's sufficient. And, and we have to really think about who in our, what students in our schools are getting served and not getting served when it comes to understanding what's available to them.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Ms. Tilly?
Thank you. This is wonderful. This expansion is greatly needed. As you all know, everyone in this room know, there has been, with the student loan debt situation, it, it has been a great barrier for a lot of young people wanting to go to college and a lot of young adults or adults wanting to go back to college. And I know a few, so I've already sent the application, the Michigan Reconnect application over via text. But question, your, your frontliners program, it looks like maybe a little over 30,000 were ineligible for the program? It says that 100, there were more than 120,000 applicants, over 85,000 qualified. What, what's, what's the gap? And, and is there a program or any resources given to the people that need assistance for that gap?
So, I believe that most of that was, they needed to verify where, that they were truly on the front lines, and so that part sort of fell short. If they're 25 and older, though, Reconnect is available to them, and hopefully, you know, pretty soon if they're 21 and older, Reconnect will be available to them.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Ms. Snyder?
I'll just say, thank you for your presentation. Michigan Reconnect and what you've said sets a very good foundation, and this is not tongue in cheek. There is significant irony in what we're going to talk about this afternoon and the importance of providing robust financial literacy to K-12 students. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Dr. Pugh?
Thank you for the presentation. Mine is very simple. I had just received a text this morning where someone was asking, where do they get their GED from because they want to go to a four-year university? I don't know. Do you know?
If you, if you want to take that, or we can take that.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I mean, you can, you can get a, you can typically get a GED from an adult education program in a local public school district.
I should have said their GED certificate. They cannot retrieve it from their local community, and they were told to come to, okay, all right. Okay.
But we could, we can add to that. We have over 400,000 people in Michigan who, who have not completed a high school certificate. And so, when we talk about, you know, equity and opportunities, that is, and also frankly, meeting the needs of our, of our labor force, that is a group of people that we need to continue to stay laser-focused on.
Absolutely.
I just thought the timing was perfect when we think about barriers and just making sure that something that simple doesn't stop anyone from continuing on.
And Dr. Rice?
Please, Dr. Rice.
You can tell I was itching to say something. It was around the counselor piece. Just on a personal note, I don't think that one person should hold the key to someone moving into post-secondary, whether or not they should go to a post-secondary institution. I was denied a opportunity to go post-secondary. My counselor did not have me, did not put in my applications to my colleges. And I did graduate from University of Michigan with distinction. So, I'm opposed to one person having that key. I think a team of individuals at the high school level who know the student the best should get together and decide with the student and their parents and the community, and the student and that, their parents, about the best possible option for that student.
I agree with that, and I'd only add to it that children aren't, we aren't, as adults, who we are at any given moment, but what we're capable of becoming. And there aren't too many people with crystal balls who are able to discern what other people are capable of becoming, let alone themselves. Thank you very much for sharing that. I appreciate that. 25 to 64-year-olds in Michigan, how many are there-ish?
4.3 million.
What's the denominator?
Over 4 million, over 4 million.
We're saying?
It's over 4 million who would be eligible for Reconnect, the Reconnect program, isn't it?
Yeah.
Who don't have their post-secondary degrees?
No.
I do this number when we roll the program out. Yeah.
Let's, let's say it's 4 million, okay? Which means that a percentage point is 40,000. So, to move that post-secondary credential attainment rate five percentage points is to move it 200,000 people, is to have 200,000 people who four-plus years ago didn't have a credential, who now have a credential. So, these efforts are making tremendous strides. That said, to go from 45 to 50 is one thing, to go from 50 to 60 is quite another. And so, you think about that increase of 200,000 people with post-secondary credentials, you need not only to double, but we need to triple that in order to get to 60%. So, in Robert Frost's words, miles to go before we sleep. We've made enormous progress on the one hand, enormous, enormous progress to make additionally. So, props to, to the governor, to you in, in Leo, to MCAN for your mutual efforts. And I think the efforts that we're working on in the department and in local school districts and ISDs across the state are having an impact as well. CTE, dual enrollment, early middle college are enormously impactful and are able to be expanded. Thank you very much, board. It is 12:19. We appreciate our presenters. Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much.
And, boy, we will, it is, it is lunchtime. We will reconvene at 1 o'clock.